Are we ready?
Yeah, I think everyone's here. Amy just joined, so we got everybody.
All right, I'll do committee member Low.
Yes.
Committee member Frederick, committee member Farrell.
Yes.
And committee member Miles Holland.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so this because it's a special meeting, we're just talking about the landscaping subcommittee report, right? We're not doing reports on any of the other stuff, right?
That's correct. We do have one member of the public here in person, so we can ask if she wants to make a public comment.
Ooh.
Well, when they have the discussion, the chair can open it back up to public comment as well.
Okay. Okay, well, um, Ken and Amy, do you guys wanna talk us through it?
Does everybody have the proposal that the Agza made in front of them or can see it?
Yes.
Okay, so at the at the meeting we had in November, we talked about the 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 sort of message I got was go get the formal proposal from Agza, so we know how much money it is, and do some more research on things. Before we talk about the formal proposal, let me tell you what I've done and what I've learned since we talked, and you guys probably have done parallel things, so you should chime in. So I've talked to a series of homeowners and landscapers and just interested parties. And in general, what I found from my point of view is everyone likes the idea of having a cleaner environment, obviously, and they want us to move to something that cleaner. They also like the idea of using a using a training methodology for the landscapers, so they pick the right things that are both economically and practically useful. And so they endorse the idea of training people. There's some pushback on the actual landscapers giving all the details of who they are and coming to the meeting. And then finding out that they're not registered in Atherton and being and getting a bill to get licensed. Uh, and so there are some concerns and pushback from the individual. Because these guys, many of them, I mean, we remember, we got, we have two thousand five hundred lots in Atherton. Assuming that nobody could do more than ten or fifteen lots. That's a lot of landscaping. Uh, and so we got a lot of landscapers we don't even know exist, who are individuals, you know, whatever. And they are not particularly excited about being identified uh, by people. And and by the way, a lot of the homeowners I've talked to similarly don't want people to know who their landscaper is because they don't want them poached by somebody. Uh, so there's a little bit of a of a privacy issue, in fact, a little bit is an understatement. About privacy issue of who is gonna be, you know, registered for these things. I've also heard back that a lot of the landlords or homeowners would love to go to this, and that's obviously we want them to. But they, on their own, it's hard for them to know what the right thing is because they're not experts in landscaping. So one of the thoughts that Amy and I kicked around was we should focus on inviting pairs of attendees, that is, the individual homeowner and the landscaper, and register only the homeowner. So the landscaper need not be registered, no name, no nothing, but they come with the homeowner as their service provider. And anyone, anyone who wants to register as a landscaper can do the same, can register as a landscaper, but if they if they choose to come with the homeowner, that's the homeowner's decision. Uh, and when we had this discussion, that got a little more interest. I've also talked, as I mentioned at the previous meeting, to non-homeowners in Atherton, primarily the circus club. And the head of the circus club landscaping basically said, look, I'd love to have myself and maybe another guy go to this because, you know, it saves us a lot of time in learning what does work and does not work. And in fact, they are the prototype of where you'd use a lot of these, uh, you know, environmentally beneficial systems. So anyways, so there's a lot of support. I've also talked to the head of the Atherton Garden Guild, which has between forty and forty-five members. And although she is mainly focused on, you know, flowers and that sort of thing, she loves the idea of doing the training in uh, in 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 uh, in in green methodologies, which would apply to the flowers. And she thinks that maybe half of her clients, half of their members would come. So you get twenty members, and if they brought their, each brought their landscaper, it'd be forty. So getting people to come, in my view, is not gonna be a problem. The issue's gonna be deciding who we, how we go after them, how many we want, and how we how we focus on it. But at the moment, I would focus on the homeowner with their landscape. That would be my my favorite attendee. But regular landscapers on their own, and obviously the circus club and the high schools, etc., would be fine alone. We also talked a little bit about timing. The the three landscapers I talked to said, you wait too long in March, and you get into the planting season where they're really starting to be very busy. And so they would prefer to do it February, mid-February to mid-March. My proposal to the to the committee and to the town council would be give the committee the latitude to pick the date and the time.
Anthony, it's a little bit hard to hear you.
I'm sorry, sorry, I moved closer. So what I'm saying is, my my recommendation is to have the town council give the committee the the lat, the uh, the ability, whoops, have I done something wrong? The ability to to get the details of the date, the details of the agenda, all those kind of things firmed up for the exact uh, the exact meeting. But basically, the outline that Agza sent applies what they cover, and the cost in that thing, if you remember, is three thousand bucks for their effort. And then if we did anything like coffee or lunch or something else, it would be in addition. I'm not sure lunch makes any sense. I think coffee does, but it'll depend on the time of day. But what I'd recommend, the council give the committee the authority to spend up to thirty-five hundred bucks. Uh, and within the parameters of that, um, of what we've said. And lastly, come back with a method of of qualifying and documenting the value of the meeting. That is, if we're gonna spend any money in Atherton, I think we should know the value we got for it. So the proposal would be, we've, not only do we do a survey of the people that went, did they like it, did it work, etc.? But we find a way, I'm not sure the answer right now, but find a way to circle back in six months and see whether or not it had any real impact. Are people now using the products they were trained in? Have we moved to to a greener landscaping in the in the town or not? And so it would include a survey methodology afterwards somehow. So that's kind of where I stand, and Amy, any other comments?
Sorry about that, I was on mute. Um, no, no other comments. I mean, the only point that I I found really interesting is if we have a lot of landscapers who are reluctant to join. Um, you know, how can we get either the homeowners or others who would potentially have influence on those landscapers to be part of the conversation? Um, we also brainstormed going out through um, uh, Zach, um, I'm forgetting his surname, who does quite a few events.
Zach, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um, for uh, just using other outlets to get out to the community um, and to try to encourage participation. Uh, so so that was just a little bit of a concern, and just how how can we how can we try to bring more people to the event to get educated, and then perhaps they would be able to talk to their landscapers one-on-one if they're not interested in coming to a formal training?
Okay, um, I have some thoughts on this. I'm concerned about the timing. I know that it, February, March makes sense because it's a less busy time for the gardeners. But it's not a lot of time, given that this will have to go in front of the council, and it'll have to wait until January, so there's not a lot of time to actually execute it. And you'll simultaneously, Rachel will simultaneously be doing Earth Day, uh, which means that we're communicating two events simultaneously that have an environmental focus. I think you will lose, I think it'll get confusing for people. I think what would make more sense is to use Earth Day, because Earth Day is like a time-locked event. Use Earth Day as a foundation to promote this event where we could have a display of all the Cool Electric gardening equipment, have information there about it, and then be using the the event as an opportunity to promote the education event. And that also then would uh, spread, would keep Rachel's resources where she could do Earth Day, and then shift her focus to promoting the second event where we could have it later. Uh, I think also, I mean, Diana, I'm not sure what's going on if the if the council's even is still considering doing an ordinance. But if there's an ordinance being adopted or being considered about being adopted, I think it makes more sense to do this education after an ordinance is adopted, because we're gonna need to do outreach to teach people about the ordinance anyways, so this might be a better. I think this is a very cool program. I just think the timing might make more sense a little bit later. One, so that resource management, two, because then we could promote it, use our event to promote it, and then three, I I'm just not sure what's going on with the ordinance there. I think, isn't that supposed to be on the like February council agenda or something like that? February, March?
When is it, Anthony?
Which which ordinance are we talking about? I think right now it's proposed to be for February.
Yeah. So I just think flow-wise, like, I don't wanna do this great event and have a hard and make it harder for Rachel and for us to promote it. And then and then pass an ordinance, and then have to do another one, is kind of my view.
Yeah, it makes sense to be attached with the ordinance in February and be on the February agenda. And I totally appreciate what you said about being able to promote it at the event. Because if everyone's already out, that's a good way, we could have signs up, we could do a lot of things to
I do.
How how many people do you want there? How many people do we need at the landscaping training? How many do you want? How many think? See, I I'm tired of these, but I I absolutely totally respectfully disagree with everything you've said for two reasons. One, when I talk to the landscapers, if you don't do it in March, don't do it. Do it, do it, do it another year, do it one year later. Second of all, if regardless of what you do with an ordinance, which clearly, quite frankly, given the state outlaws all new electric gasoline blowers in January the next year, the ordinance is of little value, if other than a stick in the eye to many people. And so the 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 overwhelming response I get is, train me, tell me what's the good thing to do, and I'll do it. I find the, we're gonna, we're gonna force you to do it, and then teach you how you can do it, the reverse. We should teach people what to do and use the ordinance if for some reason it doesn't work. But you don't need the ordinance, because the state's gonna change things in January anyway.
Yeah, so let's, let me put put a pause in that. So the ordinance isn't what we're talking about right now.
Ordinance is a reason not to have the date.
I'm saying, what I'm saying timing-wise is that right now, that's in the hands of the council. We have a council subcommittee deciding whether or not to propose an ordinance, so that's not EPC's decision anymore, that's council. So my point is more if they are going to be proposing something in February and potentially adopting something, the timing makes more sense to have this after.
Why, why?
So we could also educate people about the ordinance.
How are they, how, why wouldn't you educate them first? I don't understand the problem. Why wouldn't you educate them first? Why wait? Why, well, there's, tell me the downside of teaching people what they can do earlier and having them adopt it on their own.
Can I make a comment? I think what Steve, what I would see from what we're talking about right now, the reason to wait is Earth Day is our single biggest outreach to the community. And if we have posters and we have signage, and we have people talk about it during the lectures, we can get more people to come to it.
But we're getting, we're getting enough people anyway, and and I'm sorry. It's, this is not gonna take away from Earth Day, if anything, it'll help it. What you want, and 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 we're not gonna go out, I think it's a mistake for the town to spend a lot of time promoting it in a fashion that'll take a lot of Rachel's time. We don't need a lot of time to get to twenty to forty to fifty people for this session. I mean, there's no, there is no reason to delay doing this.
Okay, can I make another point? Our entire Earth Day budget is five thousand dollars. Well, first, let me say, I think this is a great proposal, I want to do it. But just to push back on what you're saying, your proposal for this one event is three thousand five hundred dollars. Our entire Earth Day, for which we had three hundred people, is five thousand.
And how much did you really spend?
Let me finish. So I think this has huge value, and I wanna do it, and I wanna do it big, like you just said. Doing it big is getting the word out.
What what I wanna do is I wanna change what people do actually on their, in their landscaping. I don't wanna have a nice, you know, a public affairs event that doesn't get any value for it. I don't wanna just have a training that doesn't go anywhere. I wanna be able to get the landscapers to walk away, understanding that green means to them green landscaping and green income. They can make more money by becoming green landscapers than they can without it. And if that, if we get that across to them, it'll go on its own without anything else. And there is zero reason, in my view, to have any delay whatsoever. We're not taking anything away from Earth Day. In fact, it'll build the interest in Earth Day. Uh, and it's not gonna take a lot of Rachel's time, because we don't, we don't need much to go get the forty, fifty people we need at all. I can do all that if necessary on my own.
Ask just a quick question to to Ken. Can you help me understand the sense of urgency for this year? Because you mentioned that the the landscapers you've talked to said, if we don't do it in February, we should wait until next year.
Because every year you delay, you're, tell me, tell me a reason to delay.
I don't have, I'm asking for the sense of urgency for this year.
So we have no sense of urgency in Atherton?
No, I'm I'm asking, and that's what I'm asking you, what is the sense of urgency for this year?
Because we would like to move to a greener landscaping facility in Atherton. We have an opportunity to do it. We have everything in front of us. The only thing holding us back is spending three thousand dollars. And I look around the fifty-one million dollar facility I'm in, and I'm thinking, maybe there was three thousand dollars we could save somewhere. So I I look at where the the money being spent by Atherton and saying, let's spend it for for results. I think we're gonna get a lot more actual green landscaping done if we train the people that do it, and they see a way to make a profit doing it. Uh, I believe in the free enterprise system, and I believe we can, and that's what, that's how people got to live in Atherton. And I think we can make it work by doing that. And so to say we're gonna rule by an ordinance rather than by by people doing it on their own, and to say we can wait manana, manana another year for three thousand dollars, tell me why? I don't, I find that bizarre.
Nobody's disagreeing with you on the proposal. Everyone here is agreeing with you on the proposal. The issue that we're debating right now is whether the city can react. And we have a pipeline that we have to feed into the city council. We only get a handful of windows to get their ears. So we have to figure out when is the best time to get that in their ear, and nobody's saying not to do it. So let's, let's back down a little bit.
How big of a deal is this? What do you mean, get it in their ear? It's a very simple proposal. How hard is this?
Can we, before we do it, can we put a pin in this for one second? I have some actual questions about the proposal. So can we go through some of the, can we call for questions on the proposal itself?
We all have it, yeah.
Okay, um, I have a list of them that I wanted to ask you. In their proposal of what they're gonna present, there's one item, one item called AGZA. Is that them just talking about their organization?
I I didn't write the proposal. I have not talked to Dan, other than say, send the proposal. My understa, my understanding, though, is, I think what they mean by that, my understanding is, it's the process they used at Pasadena, South Pasadena and other places, where the process is you start step by step to move eventually to total, you know, non-non-fossil, but you do it step by step, using what's available, what isn't available. So it talks about how they work.
Okay, so that was about their process, you think?
Their process.
Question, um, are they gonna actually bring pieces of equipment?
They do. And what they do is, there was a picture on that, that tent. I've not been to them, but I understand what they do is, and I had that in the attachment. They invite six manufacturing companies, or more if we got more, to come and have outside of the meeting, the actual equipment and demonstrate them as 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 desired. But these are not the Haskins hardware, they're not the Home Depot, they're Husqvarna and the Makita and the guys who work for those companies. They cannot take a purchase order that they do not sell the product. All they do is explain what the product is and show it, demonstrate it, and then say, if you wanna buy it, call Haskins, call Home Depot.
I would feel better if the proposal actually called out specifically that they are gonna reach out and get those pieces of equipment there, because as it is, it doesn't, it doesn't explicitly say that. We've kind of all been talking about it. But I'd feel better if we, if they actually said, we're gonna bring these pieces of equipment or line up that they are present.
So I might, again, this is my understanding, maybe you're wrong. They can bring some that they own. But in addition, they invite the Randy Factory reps to bring their latest versions they may not have. So I think we can go back to Dan and say, Dan, what is it you will guarantee you bring? And what is it you're gonna, you're gonna invite people to come and bring?
Yeah, so we could add that for clarity, because we are talking about creating a contract with them, so I wanna be clear what they're providing for us. So in their contract, it should say that they're bringing stuff and that they're gonna line up additional ones. So that was one item.
Council member, would you like them to have that actual, um, like, brand of equipment, or just like six to eight pieces of equipment?
It doesn't, it it, I don't know myself, to be honest, but I I I like to visualize that it's not just a talking thing without having things for people to see and look and talk.
I did have a conversation with Dan after receiving the proposal and asked him that exact same question. And he explained that they have some available, and they'll reach out to some manufacturers like Ken described, so I'll ask him to add that.
So he, in theory, what you could ask him then is, which ones can you guarantee you'll bring? And which one are you asking other people to bring? So we know the minimum and see what could possibly be.
Yeah, that would feel better on the on the contract, because if we had to then go do that on our own, that adds a whole layer of other stuff. So we're paying like a nice chunk of money, so we should make sure that we get that part in the contract. I love the idea of inviting the circus club in the schools, and obviously, I'd like to see our city invite our own vendors that run our stuff in the city.
I think Brightview has to be there.
Yeah. And Anthony, is there a second? I don't remember how this worked. Is there a second vendor that does like the, down the middle of the streets? Is we have, do we have two?
That that does what down the streets?
No, wait, do we have two different vendors that do gardening types of stuff?
Oh, no, not that I'm aware of.
So what, I thought that there was a set, there was one that's doing like the city hall in the park, and then there's one that does down out, you know, um, El Camino in the middle and some of the other public spaces. Is that wrong?
Well, so it depends on what we're talking about. So if we're talking about like the landscape work that's done at the park to prune um, flowers and sod the grass and water the grass, that's that's Brightview, but they do all-town facilities. If we're talking about just debris cleanup work in the middle of the streets, um, most of that work is done by MCE.
So MCE won't, won't have this equipment and be using this equipment, so we don't need to include them, or?
They use blowers, we could have them.
I mean, I would recommend that we probably include MCE. But but they're, they're doing some work within the town, so they'll do street cleaning and debris type of stuff, and they they, the town owns blowers. So they've operated those when they were the ones working in the 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 park, for example.
And those those town blowers, um, are those gas blowers?
We have both.
Both, okay. And on Brightview, can we um, reach out to them just to make sure that they're on board with coming? Because I do think having them there and collaborating would be important. Is there, um, would there be any reason that they would not want to participate?
I couldn't think of one, but I would, my thoughts on that would be we have full support from this group and the council before we reach out to our vendors to, you know, ask them about their interest. So they're gonna do what we asked them to do because they work for the town. So if we say we want you to be at this particular training, I'm sure that they'll send staff to it.
Okay.
Let me tell you what I know about Brightview. Brightview is a member of the National Landscaping Association, which is how I found Agza. I called, I called them and said, look, you guys, are you guys in green? They said, yes, yes, we are. In fact, we have just signed this joint venture development training thing with Agza. So the National Landscaper Association out of Washington D.C. and Agza have that combination, which I sent out to you guys, to to work together with landscapers. Brightview is well aware and part of that. And when you ask the question off the record, how 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 active is Brightview in this process? The answer is, they're kind of as active as they are proud of to do. So they they will do it, they are using green equipment, but but it'd be, but they will use more if they're cajoled and proud of to do so. Uh, and if, and and the reason being, they get paid by the hour, and the faster that they can do things, the more they make. So when you do things which reduce their speed, that's a distance center. Uh, so as a result, that's the discussion you have, and that's why, if you can prove it's actually cheaper, faster to do it um, another way, then they'll they'll jump on it. Which brings up the idea, by the way, Diana, of the the robotic lawnmowers. Uh, one of the things which I'd love to have, the two out, the two takeaways I'd love to have out of this training is that our landscapers in general, come, gardeners, come to the residents and say, Mr. Frederick, I'm doing your yard this way today. It costs you X X dollars. If I can, I'll do it all green in the following fashion, it'll cost you X plus Y, your choice. Uh, what I'd really like is X minus Y, uh, but it probably starts out X plus Y. Uh, and one of the ways they can save money is in the robotic lawnmowers. So one of the things I'd love to see is, A, our our landscapers offering both services to our our residents, and I'd love to see a Brightview have a demo going on Atherton Town property of a robotic lawnmower twenty, twenty-four seven. I'd love to find a place in uh, in 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 Hobart Palmer or somewhere else we could cordon off and just run twenty-four seven a Husqvarna or some other robotic lawnmower as a demonstration site for all the, all the town, all the townspeople, etc. And that would be, that would require Brightview being on board in this, quite frankly.
Be awesome, do that at Earth Day when everybody's out.
I'm interested in the landscapers more than the residents, but I agree with you.
Wouldn't it make sense to ask them to, if we are doing it after Earth Day, I hear your point of when you want it, so let's just I play my hypothetical. If we were to do it after Earth Day, would they come to Earth Day to bring any stuff? This company, AG whatever ZA?
Sure, if you pay them, yeah.
Could they come and bring a bunch of stuff and promote their event?
You could. I wouldn't do it that way at all, because I think it totally gets, totally gets lost in the noise. I think you do, you do a focus thing that says, here's how we're gonna be taking care of our lawns and our gardens.
Sorry, Anthony. I understand about one-third of what you say, but I I hear everybody else fine. There's something wrong. Are you breaking up most of the time for me?
Sorry. Anyway, so what I'm saying is, I wouldn't, I'm sorry, I think you tried to do too many things at Earth Day. It becomes a gala party and not a focused, I wanna make things change. In business, you focus on one thing and you get it done. And my goal here is, I wanna focus on changing as much fossil fuel equipment to battery that make economic and environmental and efficiency sake. And I I wanna do that by getting the 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 homeowner and the and their their supporter locked in step, learning and saying, done, we're done. They can leave that meeting and say, all right, let's go, let's go do it in my property. That's what I wanna go do.
Can I ask another question of the group? I'm sorry, I'm mindful that I'm gonna have to leave soon because I have to drive over to the city council. Um, when the top, at the meeting with the subcommittee about inviting other cities, Bill was adamant against not doing it with Menlo Park. And I don't, I didn't get a clear understanding of why he felt that way. But it seems to me that it would be good to do it with our neighboring cities' cooperation. What is everyone here's view on that particular point?
Totally against it. The reason I'm totally against it is the moment you add one more, one more bureaucracy into the discussion, it's not April, something, it's not February of twenty twenty-two, it's February of twenty twenty-four. Uh, second of all, I would invite them, but I'd invite them without, they wouldn't have to pay a penny. They can attend, but I'd have them attend on the on the video version. Uh, what I would do is that this thing will hold be video, just like we do here. And you can see it and hear it across the video, which might be, by the way, another value to those landscapers who wanna stay in the shadows. They can do it that way. Uh, and secondly, I've, I know some guys in the Menlo Park area involved in the environmental side. They love the idea. They they said the same kind of idea, question could be part of it. And my reaction was, I would, you know, not my, not my final decision, but my recommendation is, you can attend on the video. But and and maybe even in person if we got extra room, but we're not gonna ask you to be part of it or spend any money. Because the moment you get 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 Menlo Park or any other organization involved, it becomes way too complicated and and it'll take forever.
Was the videoing included in the proposal? Or is is the the consultant gonna do the videoing?
No, no. No, 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 no. I, I, the, the, tomorrow, I may be wrong. We could ask them, but I was assuming it would be just like this.
Well, we, we don't have this in the park.
Do we have it in, don't we have it in, in Holbrook Palmer in the, in the pavilion?
No.
There's no video on the pavilion?
There's a, we put up a camera. It's not anything close to this type of setup.
Well, we have to think about that then.
Yeah.
And what's the biggest? What's the biggest room that has a decent video in it? Is this it?
This is, this is the only one. Those other facilities were put together in the seventies, right? Like they've never been remodeled for audio and video. There's, the pavilion has a speaker system, but all the camera work is done, you know, we set up like a camcorder.
And how hard is that to do?
Well, the wifi, you'd need significant wifi.
Absolutely. So.
Does it not have wifi?
There's, there's internet in there. It's, it's not as strong as I'd like it to be, but we do have. I'll make sure that you get, you get called in a second. It looks like we have a public comment, um, for you to be heard. You're gonna need to come up to one of these microphones. I'll set you up.
We should ask him what he can do and what we can do as soon. Cause I, I think we should do at least, even if it's a rudimentary version, we should do it.
In the, in the park in the past, we got a hotspot from the library. And, uh, but it does take some effort. You gotta set it up and you get a hotspot on loan. And then I think, uh, Stacy's husband did it last time.
I'm not talking about in the, in the actual outside. I'm saying the lectures.
Yeah, I know. I'm talking about in the pavilion or in any of the buildings. There's not, they, they don't have wifi. So if we were to do it in the council chambers where we do have the equipment to do it, we don't really have the outdoor space maybe to do the demonstrations of the cutting and stuff like that.
These are just logistics. I wanna make sure we take into consideration.
Yeah, the proposal should include where we're proposing to have it. And I'll also the proposal right now, am I correct? That does not include a budget for sending out any announcements. You're, you're using your approach of contacting the people you know, but I, I think we need to to.
You know, uh, let's let, let's let the, the public have a comment before we go for it.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to run in a, in a couple minutes. Yeah.
Excuse me. I have one suggestion. Why not do a YouTube blast coming from this committee to the town? And it won't cost you anything. They can, you can ask the companies to come over to Holbrook Palmer with your equipment and give a YouTube blast. And that would be nothing more than showing off their equipment. And then the next one, showing off the equipment. In other words, generate some energy before you bring it out to the Atherton community. Thank you.
Nice.
Um, thanks, thanks.
I have another. I have another question for the proposal. Is there like a maximum capacity for this? I know I assume there's some maximum because they'll have equipment and demos and stuff, right? Have they given any?
I don't think there's a maximum, but let's go back to how you get things done. I don't want 500 people, you know? I think you want, this is the first, first of all, let me just say another word about this. When I talked to the people running the Atherton Garden, uh, the Atherton Garden Guild, what, what they said was, wow, we've been trying to do something like this for years. We'd like to have one day a year where we do training in something for our gardening, uh, and landscapers that, that we, we, we get a little, raise the profession in some fashion. They would love to do that and go, wow, what a great idea. But let's, let's walk before we run. Let's, let's try the concept and see what we do with it. It's not gonna be perfect. And my view is if I had more than forty-five people there, it would be too many. If I have less than fifteen, it's too few. But what I really want is I want people to leave there and start actually applying green landscaping. Not talking about it, not feeling good, applying it. And the way you get that is the landscapers realize, A, it's a threat if they don't do it, they'll lose their business. And B, it's a way to make more money if they do do it. And that's the goal. Uh, so that's why I wouldn't have more than X number to do it. And, and I'm, I'm sorry, Diana, but I, my, my reaction is if the town council is not willing to give the adults on the environmental committee three thousand dollars at the discretion to pick a day and a time and a location, then I'm sorry, you should be micromanaging other people.
Well, I don't, okay. So I think Anthony, maybe you can answer that, but that's not what our charter is. It's the E P C that we can't just like, right? So I don't know for these kinds of flow thing.
I wanna make sure I understand the question, but part of the charter is outreach and education. And as I understand it, that's what the goal of this is. So I think the short answer is yes, but the more complicated answer is funding, regardless of how big or small is, is always a, a source.
No, no, my point was this, it's three thousand dollars. To what level of granularity does the town council need to say, yes, I can spend that? I don't think it is, it's gonna be exactly on this day and start at this time and go to this end and this exact location.
No.
I think it is.
How much?
We trust you. Here's the maximum you can spend. Use your judgment in this guidelines.
In terms of what you would need to bring to the council, that's probably accurate. This is what we want. This is the money we need. This is what we're gonna do with it. And as much detail and specificity as you can provide, that would be helpful to inform their decision. I certainly can't speak on their behalf, but I can tell you from prior proposals for something not exactly related, but similar, they, they do want the details. So if you brought something like what is here and maybe with a specific layout of this is where we're gonna put it. These are the people we're targeting to invite. This is how we're gonna make sure it gets shared broadly and widely. We may also wanna conduct some type of outreach campaign that would include YouTube blasts or an email marketing campaign or, or whatever the case is to, I think that that, all that information has helped. That's my suggestion.
I, I wanna clarify one thing. I, is there anybody who thinks we should have more than about forty to forty-five people at this session? Because if we need five hundred, we should be marketing the heck out of it. If we need forty-four of the leading decision makers, the early adopters, which I want, want the early adopters, we could do that by word of mouth without a lot of work. And if there's a legal requirement that we do this and the town has to spend thousands of dollars for publicizing it, then that's another problem. Now, if you just put it on your website, to me, that's, that works.
I think we wanna get as many folks as possible registered because we often have attrition with events. We have a hundred folks registered and half show up. So I do wanna think about sharing the word broadly, but also focusing on the right audience. So I think Councilmember Hawkins Manwelyan was referring to the mailer that we discussed in our subcommittee meeting.
How much money would that cost? I wouldn't do that. I wouldn't spend any money doing that. Are you, you, this is to me, if you can't get forty-five, fifty people there on the merits of the discussion with people, then you shouldn't do it.
And we can discuss those details as we bring forth this proposal to the council. I think this group has to make a decision today if they wanna bring this concept to the city council.
On January, or sorry, just January thirteenth or something.
It'll be the third, the thirty-third day of January. So that is.
So I heard earlier.
January eighteenth.
At the moment, there's some more specificity. There's some more specificity, specificity we want in the proposal to the, to the, to the, to the town council. I would argue we should agree to, to take the proposal after adding the specificity that was asked by Diana. That's my, that'd be my recommendation.
I'd suggest that you make a motion and you guys can move forward with taking an actual vote on it unless there's more discussion needed.
Yeah, my motion would be that we vote to present to, to the, to the town council in January after adding the specificity and details that has been requested by the committee and by, by Diana.
But does that include the date since there is some concern around the date?
I think it includes, as I said in my note, our target dates being between the fifteenth and the fifteen, fifteenth of March, eight, February fifteenth of March, but give us some discretion to say if we can't, if we don't wanna do it in those dates, we won't spend the money and we'll do it some other date, but come back to you on them. If we don't do it in that period, we can't spend the money without coming back to tell you.
And when does the council meet again after January eighteenth?
The next meeting this could go to would be the January eighteenth and, oh, you said after January, sorry.
Sorry, yeah.
They'll meet again in February twice, but this is likely gonna be something that would be on a regular meeting and not a study session. So it would be February fifteenth.
So, but if you, you know, if, if we, if we believe it's gonna pass, which I can't imagine any reason why it wouldn't, but things happen. All we gotta do between now and, and that second week in February is lock in forty five people that'll come, meaning maybe you get fifty or more to say they will come, but whatever the number is. So, and I, so I, I don't, you, you don't wait until it's passed to start getting people to say, I'm gonna go. I'm, you, you're, you're open to them saying, hey, it may not happen, but if it does, are you interested?
I think I think this should go to the council as a proposal, cause I think the biggest issue is budget. I think you should, in your proposal, include some buffer, because if anytime you go over budget, you have to come back to the council to get extra money. So if as you're going through planning this, you realize, oh, maybe we do wanna do a mailer or maybe we do wanna do some social media outreach, need to have marketing money in that proposal, because if you wanna spend three thousand dollars and six hundred, you know, three thousand, six hundred dollars, that extra money has to get approved by the council. So I would build yourself a budget, a buffer to get that approved by the council so that if you don't spend it, great, but that way you're not having to come back in front of the council. One, I also think that you should build in some mechanism with this company and with as you're planning where there's an ability to reschedule it if you are, if we are not feeling like we're getting the attendance that we want. Cause I think spending three thousand dollars to have ten people educated about this is a lot per person. I mean, I think it's, this is a very good program. I wanna make sure people are there. So with this timeline, we're not feeling like people are coming, can we re, like, get something in the contract to, could we move it? You know?
Stacy, you, you're asking the question right on that came up and, and I don't know if you put it in the contract or not. I didn't, didn't see it. I literally exchanged, I exchanged emails with Dan and said, Dan, what happens, the, 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 what he charges is fifty percent of the fee when he signs up and fifty percent when they complete. Isn't that the way it works? And what I said to him is, look, what if we decide to postpone it or cancel it, uh, because we didn't get enough people for whatever reason? There's a, you know, a major problem. There's a, some catastrophe, whatever. He said, look, once you paid me my fifty percent, that's mine. If we don't do it, I don't charge you that. If you reschedule it for another time, you know, up to within reason, not ten years, but within, you know, six months or a year, you, you, I do it for the price you, you said, and you don't pay me anymore. So what basically, once, once we lock in with him, we can change the date anytime we want. We, but we lose half of it if we cancel it totally, which I think is ra, is rational and reasonable.
And this event happen rain or shine?
Sure. Yeah. I don't know why not. But good point. I mean, I mean, I, I cannot fathom why you wouldn't get, remember we got two thousand five hundred homes. If, if everyone's doing ten, that's two hundred and fifty of these guys and people aren't doing ten, some are doing thirty and some are doing one. So there's lots of guys out there and we got the, we got the, 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 we got the, the, the circus club, et cetera. If every member of the council and every member of our committee went to this and brought our, brought our gardeners, we'd have more than enough people to do it anyway. Uh, and so I, you know, I don't think getting the people is gonna be the problem. We just gotta start, start down the path. But, but your, your point's well taken. If we cancel it, we'll lose half. If we just roll it for another six months or a year, there's no, there's no problem.
I would like to know if it could be over a year, cause if what you were saying is correct, that gardeners will only show up if it's in the months of February and March, and we decide not to do it in February and March, can we do it a year later and have a year to plan this if they won't show up in the summer?
Yes, I'd be ten years. We'll find that, we'll find that date.
Maybe that could be put in the contract. So thirty-six months to be safe, twenty-four, thirty-six months.
It's three years? Who, who signs the contract for three years? I mean, come on.
Or if they can, at least they can accept because, I mean, I'm envisioning a couple of things. First of all, if we don't get the numbers of people that we want, if the council decides they're not able to make a decision, so we push it out a year. And then there are unforeseen circumstances. I mean, at least you have to go beyond twelve months, because if we schedule that, let's say for the third week of February, um, keeping in mind, there's a holiday in February. Most people take an entire week off if they have kids in school to go somewhere. So you're looking at a weekend. So weekends on either side of President's Day um, are not good. So, so then if you don't push it twelve months and we happen to run into the first month of March and then they don't uphold it, it's a mistake. So twenty-four months at the minimum would be my vote.
I mean, I don't think that's, I don't think it's feasible. What, what contract would you sign, given inflation at ten percent a year? What contract?
If I wanted, if I wanted the business, I would sign it.
Well, he doesn't need the business. I mean, it's, I mean, let's be, let's be honest here. So what I'm saying is I think the idea is con, is fine. I would say, we'll see what he says, but I would say we plan to do it before the end of March in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, sorry, twenty twenty-three, but we have until the end of March in twenty twenty-four.
Fine, fine. That's fine.
It's basically a year and two months.
That would, that would make up for any potential conflicts.
Right.
And then the other, the other issue is just making sure that the vendors that have, um, I don't know what the right term is for this, but the greatest acreage. Um, so certainly the vendors that we use, circus, circus club, of course, the schools, whoever is responsible for the, the police station, um, those, I think those vendors are really critical. Um, given the, the kind of influence they have and that they are being paid by the, you know, if they are being paid by the town or other public entities, I just would like not, you can't guarantee their participation, but, um, making sure that we, you know, communicate with them first, make sure that they're there. And then however we plan word of mouth or otherwise to get out to the other landscapers.
Yeah, I, I, I take your point. I think that, I mean, for example, there's a guy named Jim Ward who used to be like the, probably one of the larger guys around. He's, his business has dwindled off a little bit, but a guy like him who's got, I don't know, fifteen or twenty or so places in Atherton is one of the guys you really wanna have there. And, and quite frankly, the, the, just, I mean, we, we don't see the circus club as being part of Atherton, but it is. And, and if you look at Greenery in Atherton, that's a big spot.
So however you measure that acreage or um, because that would directly correlate with the amount of greenhouse gas emissions that are associated with those gas blowers, right? So that's what we're ultimately trying to do. We're trying to lower emissions um, and have a greener type of landscaping. So, um, getting several small vendors is beneficial, but those larger vendors that are responsible for more acreage would certainly have a bigger impact.
As, as an aside, you, uh, you guys may remember, I, I was before my time, but a lady named Jennifer was a member of the committee in the past.
Yeah.
Um, I talked to her and when I mentioned it to her, discussed it. She loved the idea and she said, but you know, I'm already using a robotic lawnmower. And I said, what? She said, yeah, no one over, no one knows it, cause it's so quiet. They don't know we're using it. Uh, but you know, she, her backyard is now done with a robotic lawnmower, which that was great.
Bring hers if we don't get them to bring one.
We'll, I, I, trust me, Husqvarna would love to show their latest product.
Should we get to the vote as we're getting close?
The proposal was, we add the exist, these extra details. How does the committee know they're added? So we should send it around to the committee, know, to know they've been added. And based on that, we then presented, is that it?
Yeah, I propose that you and I would iterate on it with, um, Amy as part of the Sustainable Landscaping Subcommittee. We'd work with Dan to get to kind of the next version and then we would share it with the rest of the E P C.
Okay. So I'm leaving tonight on the flights Australia. Um, I can do some of this obviously there, although the overlap between phone calls to the U S and sobriety in Australia is pretty small.
That didn't go over my head.
But, but, but what I'll do is at a distance between all of us and Dan, I'll try to see if we can iterate and add the, the answers to what Diana wanted or what Stacy wanted. I'll try to see if we can iterate and add the, the answers to what Diana wanted, what Stacy wanted, so we can send it, send to the committee an updated version and say, that's what we plan to set. Is that fair?
Yeah, and I discussed with Dan our timing, so I'd be happy to reach out to him after this meeting to get an editable file and start, um, adding the kind of, um, city touch to it.
I think I would also be prepared, I don't think it has to be in the proposal, I think it's more for the meeting. Is that I think, I expect other members of the council will have similar questions to, as me, around if we're adopting an ordinance right after this. Like, should we move it? And so I would have some, do some diligence with these gardeners and people that you've talked to about whether or not, if, if we do, I know you don't want an ordinance, we don't need to talk about that again. But if we were to adopt an ordinance, or if we were for some reason to move it to the summer, or some other month outside of February, March, like, would they absolutely not attend? I would like to have more, I think you should be prepared to answer questions about that.
Let me, let me, the, the only feedback, I haven't asked it that way, but let me tell you what I think will happen, but I'll, I'll come back to it. If we do the training in February, March, and we get extra people doing it, and then an ordinance is passed, for whatever reason.
Yeah.
The people that now all of a sudden go, oh shit, I can't do this anymore, are going to want a second training. Uh, and, and that would be okay because we could charge for that.
Well, but with government, so we couldn't.
It could be done, there's a way to do it. There's always a way.
I love you taking no risks, dude. I really do.
I, seriously, I mean, it can be done.
I, I just, my question is, like, because I, I think this program is excellent. And so I'm worried that people won't pay attention to it until an ordinance is adopted. And then if an ordinance is adopted, and then all of a sudden people are mad that we already had this program before.
There's a law out there saying in a year you can't buy one.
Yeah.
So that, the ordinance is already out there, people know it's coming.
Yeah.
So, so after they're passing their ordinance, yeah, I mean, by the way, I mean, Anthony, let me ask you this question. What's, what's the cost of writing an ordinance?
Depends on how involved our city attorney is, but staff time, so.
So it's staff time, but we pay staff, and we've had, and we've attorney, so there's a cost for every ordinance. And then how do we, and what would it cost to, to enforce it? What are we, how are we going to enforce this ordinance?
Let's not talk about the order, my question.
No, I'm just saying, you talk about cost, you talk about cost, and angst in the community, trust me.
Well, one thing on ordinance, and I agree with you, Stacy, we shouldn't talk about that here, is that if that, the one, the law you're talking about coming in effect, that's going to ban the sale, that means that everyone theoretically could buy one the day before, you know, just the end of December, and what's the shelf life of that piece of equipment?
Two to three years max.
Yeah, so you're pushing this whole thing two or three years. Which, you know, in the scheme of the universe is not bad, but in the, if you were a teenager and facing.
But you know, if you thought, if you thought there were good things about green, green stuff, you wouldn't buy anything but green, would you? I mean, if you knew before the ordinance, before December thirty, before January one, twenty twenty-four, that you had good solutions, you'd buy them now.
Yeah, no, I, I.
So I, I, I see, there is zero downside to spending three thousand bucks.
I think my question, more, I'm trying to like predict questions you'll get from other members of the council, who are a little more frugal, who are going to be like, we're going to do this once. And then, and then the question is, does it make sense to do it before and after an ordinance? And that is a question you need to be ready to answer of whether or not people will come if we delay it till after the ordinance. Because if you know definitively, I've talked to Circus Club, I've talked to these big gardeners that are very high volume workers, and they say definitively, I will not come, that, that's the information you need to have prepared.
And, and I'm, I'm trying to, they wouldn't come because they're waiting for the ordinance?
No, would they attend late spring or summer?
Say, say, say it again, what's the question?
So you've been very specific that we need to have it in February, March, and I believe you. But I think you need to be prepared to answer more questions about the timing, because I think there are people in the council are going to want to do this once, and they're going to want to know why we, whether it makes more sense to wait after the ordinance and do it once. And you have said they won't come in the summer, or they won't come at another time of year. And I think it would be better if you could be more specific with your answers that I talked to these, you know, three people or whoever, and they've been clear that they would not be able to come.
As you might tell, I'm getting frustrated. And I can't, I just, I, I, I agree with everything you're saying. If, if there was a number that meant was meaningful, we're, three thousand dollars in Atherton.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, look, I agree.
Sitting in a fifty-one million dollar complex.
She's not debating you.
Look, I, I agree with Ken, but like, I had to spend an hour in front of the council for Earth Day to just, to ask for a thousand dollars for food.
Well, then we got the wrong council.
So I'm just telling you, like.
Then have the wrong council, either we're going to, we have to move quickly.
The council is who, just be prepared for, you know, who's elected and be ready for those answers. I, you know, is more my advice. You could choose not to, that's your call, but like, those are the questions I predict you'll get.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm from the Yoda philosophy of, there is no, there is no try, there's only do.
Yeah, well, she's giving you the tools to do it. She's warning you that you have to answer these questions.
Well, I'll come back with all those answers, I mean, I mean, all I want to say is, I just don't see a downside.
There is no downside.
Spending three thousand dollars.
There is no downside. The question is, is she's preparing you to do your best case in front of the council. And the best rate in front of the council is to have a little more details we discussed, and be prepared to ask, answer the obvious questions.
That's January nineteenth?
Yeah. And it doesn't have to be in the written one. I think you're just, you're going to get questions from members of the council about this, and you should be ready.
So should, if we do this, should Amy and I come in dressed as the Stanford tree?
Can't hurt, can't hurt.
Let's proceed your work for that. Will they present to the city at the council if they're on the agenda, Anthony left? But Stacy, do you know, if, if they're on the agenda, will they come and do a formal presentation, or will you do it? How does it work?
They would do a presentation, I believe.
So.
How can we do it any way we want?
I think it'd be a joint presentation.
Okay, so you would do the city, so there will be, as normal procedure, there'll be a staff.
Yeah, and I would write the staff report.
Page would be to discuss, the recommendations, discuss this proposal. Proposal will be attached, you'll do the intro, and then they can.
Yeah, and then as the subcommittee representative, you and Amy would be able to do public comment with different time limit restrictions.
Yeah.
So, are we done for this? Because I want to make one other comment on this before we're finished. Is that, are we done with saying, if I come back to you with information, we'll pass it on, and then decide where to go from there, is that fair? Do we know what we and I have to do, are we, are we clear?
No, I think we have to take a vote.
As long as they vote that that's what they want us to do.
Yeah, I mean, I'll bring it back to you, and you pass it out, and we don't have to get together again in person, right?
Right, so what we as a committee would vote to basically empower you guys as the subcommittee to like go forth and conquer, and we wouldn't have to be consulted anymore, because that is a Brown Act violation, so.
We're not voting that now, we're voting it.
Right now.
We're voting it right now.
Yeah, right now, we're like giving you the framework, and then you guys can go write it and like, and then represent the EPC to the council in meetings.
Perfect.
Without having to do more meetings. Unless you're varying wildly.
We need to vote on that, we need to.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, because otherwise it's not the EPC voting, it's just you as a private person.
So I would, can I make that proposal?
Yeah, you can make the motion.
I make the motion?
Can you state what you're making the motion for?
The motion is that we go to the council on the nineteenth with a proposal as, as, um, added, with added information that is passed by the, the committee for their, for their knowledge.
I'm just going to change it to January eighteenth in your statement.
Is that what it is, January eighteenth?
Yeah, six to ten.
And do we need to specify what information is being added?
Well, and, and the information is specificity as to the contract length and ability to cancel or modify, and what, what products will definitely be there, and which ones are, has to be there.
Mm-hmm, and the location.
And the, well, but we might change the location. I mean, so it's going to be in Atherton, in, somewhere in Atherton in our property. Depending on, depending on the numbers and the ability to get internet and all the rest, we might have, we might do it. How many people can you get in here if you do as a classroom seating?
We can, we can explore that.
I mean, it's got to be eighty or something, isn't it? I mean.
We don't have to, you, that's what would be up to you.
That's what I'm saying, so, I mean, it could be, it could be a bunch of places.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll pick that, that location. With that, with that specificity, I'll come back to you and we'll.
We also need to add more of a budget buffer.
Well, how much of a budget buffer would you say? I don't want, I mean, we could put in thirty thousand bucks, and that will give us, that'll give us a buffer, but.
No, I mean, I think, I think you just need, work with Rachel on figuring out, like, what's the maximum this could cost?
The cost, real, the, I mean, first of all, again, I wouldn't spend any money mailing. I'd find a way to put it on the website, anything else we're doing, given what we're doing. So for that kind of money, it really makes any sense. Um.
There's also stuff like, um, if you have it on a weekend, you have to pay town staff.
Overtime, yeah.
Overtime.
We'll, we'll discuss.
So that's the kind of stuff that you need to like.
So was that times, was that, was that overtime time staff in that five thousand dollars for the?
Yes. Yes.
That included overtime for the?
Yes.
That really?
Yes.
Seems like you got a bargain.
Tiny little budget, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Maybe we, can we add then like a, a thousand dollar buffer for?
That's what I would do, and just have like a thousand.
Four thousand, you're saying?
Yeah, and just say, like, within that extra thousand dollar buffer, which we hope to not spend, it would include, you know, potential marketing expenses, um, staff time, unexpected things, if you guys have to print out signage, like, there's things that you just want to have it in there because you don't want to have to come back to the council to be like, please, may I have another?
Over that, I'll spend my own money.
Well, there's a lot of rules.
Motion. Did anyone want to clarify this motion or second it?
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Nice, and now we vote.
Doesn't matter, we're all members of the committee.
Great.
You can vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
I vote aye.
So then Rachel, will you do the roll call vote, since Anthony's not there?
He's here.
Oh.
But I'll do it. Uh, Chair Miles Holland?
Yes.
Vice Chair Farrell?
Yes.
Committee Member Frederick?
Yes.
And Committee Member Lo?
I abstain because unfortunately, every time somebody speaks in the room there, you fade away within about thirty seconds, and it's incom, incomprehensible. And I, I mean, the people on the screen are fine, but the people in the room, I can't understand. So I don't want to vote on something I don't understand. But, um, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm inclined to vote yes, because it sounds good. But, but I, I must admit that, uh, I, I, I don't feel well informed because I didn't understand what you said, okay? And, and I don't know if this is going to be like this every time we have a hybrid session, because if it is, it's, it's very difficult to participate.
Thank you for your feedback, Lo, we're working on the audio in this room, and we'll, we'll continue to improve. And starting in the new year, we'll have a new format as well, which we can, um, discuss at our January meeting, which will be on January nineteenth, so that's well timed.
So that's passed, can I make my final comments? On the eighteenth, in theory, I'm in Washington DC, but I might come back on the seventeenth. If I'm in Washington, I will try to find a way to make sure I can do it by video.
Don't tell me you have more grandkids than DC.
No, no, this is actual business.
Oh.
Um, but I might have grandchildren to DC, I don't know, I was, lived there for a while. Um, so, um, second of all, I think that the council and the new council members should hear the story about the fact that these gardeners are not registered and do not want to be registered. And quite frankly, when you ask the question is, what would, what value would I get for being registered? What value does the town get for three hundred and seventy-five dollars? Uh.
You're talking about business license?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the question is, gee, unlike inspecting your, 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 your damage to the tree or your damage to your construction, is there, there's no one not checking our, our landscapers and showing them how to blow? I mean, so one of the questions is, why do we have, why do we ask these guys to pay three hundred and seventy-five dollars? Uh, really, is that, I mean, is that a value? And how do we decide what it should be? I don't have an answer for that right now, but I think the council want to think about it, because maybe there's a totally different structure where we have once a year a training, and we charge something for it. And if you do the training and complete the quiz at the end of the training, you are not then on the, Atherton attended the training list for that fee. And whenever one says, I'm looking for a landscaper, where do I find one? You say, here's a list that went to our training, we can't tell you which one to use, or you can use somebody else. These are the ones that have come to our training.
That's awesome.
And, and for that, people would be happy to do it, but why spend money, something for, for nothing, for anything? Homeowner doesn't get any value, and neither does the landscaper.
Makes sense to me. If there are no other committee reports, I do want to mention, um, the rules that, that Rachel just referenced that are going to start technically at the end of February of twenty twenty-three, and it's related to what we can do for remote meetings. So the governor, I guess he already published the notice that said, at the end of February of twenty twenty-three, he will no longer have the emergency, um, the state emergency in place. And so the rules that allow us to meet under these remote conditions will, will go away. There's a new law in place that have, um, offered some different rules, and I sent a memo out about this. Hopefully you guys all received it, but essentially, people are going to need to be meeting in person unless you have an emergency and there's a very tightly defined window about emergencies. Now, if you do want to participate in a meeting remotely, like you suggest, um, you're going to be in DC on business, you still can do that, but it's just going to be done under the prior, give me one second.
So what, what time, when is it, January one it starts?
It, no, it technically starts March first, but I think we should start doing that as of January.
Gotcha, okay.
And so what it means is that you can still participate in meetings remotely, but staff will have to list where you're going to be on the agenda. We have to say on the agenda, committee member so and so is going to be at this location. That has, that agenda has to be posted wherever you're at, somewhere in a public place. So if you're at a business meeting or a hotel, we have to contact the hotel and post it at the hotel. So we're going to need to know that information at least seventy-two hours before the agenda is published. And you have to make whatever meeting space you're participating in accessible to members of the public. Now granted, if somebody from Atherton or whoever cares about our meetings is going to be in DC in February that wants to come to your hotel room and participate in the meeting, probably not. But I'm just saying that those rules, those prior Brown Act rules will be in place.
In the bar, and I have an open tab, people will come.
Can you be out of state?
You absolutely can be out of state, but there are rules about how many people can be out of state, and how many people have to be here in person, and where they need to be. So just keep that in mind, if you're going to need to participate in a meeting remotely, we're going to need to know that information well before the day of, so that we can make sure that the meeting is going to.
So six to nine is when the meeting is, on the eighteenth.
Correct.
And if I had a six PM flight in, in the East Coast, that's nine o'clock. So I could be at the airport early.
Well, that's different, you're participating as a.
Yeah, yeah, I'm saying, I'm just trying to make sure that my window works.
Oh, yeah, we, we can talk about that offline.
Yeah.
There's no further business we can adjourn.
And, and does anyone need that email that Anthony sent regarding the new law?
I could resend it to the committee.
You told me what I need to know now, I got to be, no, thanks.
If you are not a fan of this old Brown Act, feel free to email our state legislators, like I have, to be like, hey, the internet exists now, we got used to it. Please update the Brown Act.
Um, I have a question, is, is this Stacy's last meeting? Should we have a little toast or something?
There's going to be a celebration on the twenty-first for incoming council members, which you're welcome to attend as a committee member, Ms. Farrell. Actual items to toast in, as you keep alluding to.
It's not going to cost three thousand dollars, I hope.
I don't want to talk about.
I want to see the budget for that, I just want to check, because she would be willing to go.
We donated the wine.
She would be willing to go without it if it, if it was, is required. I wouldn't be there.
That's not on the agenda. But.
So.
I think as part of the Earth Day Subcommittee, we could toast to, to, uh, committee member Miles Holland.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, thanks for the work, thanks.
An inspiration and leadership.
Thank you for your service.
Thanks, guys. Well, I'm excited to be on the other side of the council table for when we talk about this exact thing, all over again. I can't hear you, Ken, your mic is off, I think.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just saying that I won't be able to get to any of this till I get to Australia, but I'll send, before I go, a note to, to Rachel and to Dan saying, here's items we got to work on. And then in Australia, I'll send a note back, is that fair? All right, thanks.
And please include, include Amy as part of the Subcommittee.
Sure, yeah, 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 yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.